Okay. I'll go ahead and call to order a regular meeting of the planning commission for the town of Superior. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Jim Satel.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momars.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Sardan here.
Bob McCool.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Witty. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Hillary Graham.
Here.
Thanks, Phyllis. Next item on the agenda is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. Any members of the public wish to comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First, I guess the only item is the approval of the minutes of the October 10th and October 17th meetings. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? And does anybody have any changes to the October 10th minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Malia. All those in favor? Motion's carried in the October 17th minutes. At least abstained. Anybody have any changes to the October 17th minutes? Can we have a motion? Motion to approve? Mr. Momars, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stewart, all those in favor? I have to abstain on that, Phyllis. Okay. Next item is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of the final plat, final development plan for Ethan Allen in the Superior Marketplace. Go ahead and call the public hearing to order. Staff want to make any presentation?
Please.
I have proof of publication.
I don't have my cheat sheet, Phyllis. Thanks for covering me. Okay. Thank you. Proof of publication of notice. Stephen, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll give your presentation. Phyllis, do you mind killing the lights, please? Thank you. Stephen Williams, Town Staff. Agenda item five concerns an Ethan Allen request for both a final plat and a final development plan for Lot 12 within filing six of the filing six subdivision of the Superior Marketplace. Ethan Allen owns Lot 12 and is not proposing any changes to the actual property configuration or size, which is 1.28 acres. The planning portion of this application, which we'll cover first, is limited to vacating and dedicating public easements to facilitate the development of the 11,971 square foot retail building they're proposing through the final development plan application. These illustrations generally reflect the location of the proposed site, the Ethan Allen site within the town of Superior. It's in the northwest corner, as well as where it lies within the marketplace. It sits directly across from the Costco site, just south of Marshall Road, and just east of Fifth Avenue, which runs north-south through the marketplace development. Ethan Allen has owned this property for over 12 years and actually received a development approval for a larger retail building in 2007. That was nearly 18,000 square feet in size. That approval, however, has expired, and so they're coming back now for a different proposal for a smaller square foot retail building, but on the same property. The location of this property is relevant to certain exception requests that the applicant is making, as well as staff's application of several development criteria, which will be discussed through the final development portion of this application. Here on this slide are two of the plats that are shown within the replat application. The slide on the, or the image on the left here shows the two vacation requests. There's one that runs all the way through, north-south through the property. This easement's related to an irrigation water line. There's a shorter easement that kind of runs parallel with it for about two-thirds of the site, and it's for dry utilities. Both of these irrigation easements are being vacated through this proposal, and it's partly due to their development proposal application, which includes a retaining wall, which cannot conflict with the dedicated easements that are existing. But there's several lines in this area that currently exist that aren't going to be used, so they're going to be abandoned. That's a little bit more complicated than I get in with the presentation, but that's where we landed when we did the review of the existing plat. So for all extents and purposes, for this is these two vacations, and then we'll get into the utilities that are being rerouted through the final development plan. Through this plat application and also dedicating five easements, the first one is a joint easement for their reuse water line and their electric line. So they have two lights along Fifth Avenue that are existing and need to still have electricity. They're kind of in these two locations here. They also have a reuse water line that's already irrigating, so there's been improvements to this corner just because it's an entry into the marketplace. So there's landscaping that's being irrigated and will continue to be irrigated. And then when we get into their final development plan, their irrigation tap-in will also be off of this line to do their own irrigation for their landscaping that's proposed for their site. So the first one is that, it's a lot more complicated, but that first easement is related to those two utilities. Their second easement is related to storm drainage, and this will allow for a storm drain to be installed here and route storm water to the east. Their third easement request is for dry utilities, and that's to extend dry utilities from the south to their northeastern building corner. This fourth easement is related to fire access. They need a 24-foot wide fire lane for fire service and emergency response. And then this last easement is a smaller easement required for their water meter pit in the southeast corner of their site. So that's the plat. That's the plat request. There are two off-site easements that are required in order to have the connectivity they need with the rest of the development, and one is a continuation of that storm drain line. It's across a different property, so it's not being established through this plat, which is limited to Lot 12, so they'll need a separate easement, and this easement will need to be between the town and the property owner of this site. So that easement's required, and then the dry utility easement that's existing that they're tapping into isn't contiguous with their property. It runs down here. It's a 10-foot wide easement, so these utilities are existing for them to tap in. They also need another utility easement here across the property. So there's conditions in staff's memo that relate to reflecting these on this plat, getting the recordation done before the plats approved, so that this stands as a complete record of their proposal. So now getting into the FDP part of the application, which verifies or clarifies the various improvements proposed, including their utility needs, which will necess, which are necessitated by the easements, which necessitate the easements that we just discussed. This site context plan helps illustrate how Ethan Allen will tie into the surrounding development. The property's primarily, primary vehicular access comes in off of Fifth Avenue, and their property actually extends to the center of Fifth Avenue. So there's a joint access easement between the rest of the development and Ethan Allen to have access across Fifth Avenue. There's an additional, and that's 30 feet in width, there's an additional 26-foot wide access easement that allows Ethan Allen to cross over the property to their south and have access to the parking that exists and have access to their own parking aisle that's proposed to the east of their building. There are 18 onsite parking spaces proposed, and it's a little clearer on this side, eight of which exist to the east of their building, 10 of which exist to the south. And then, as most of us are aware, there's ample parking out in the marketplace. They are entitled to 40 shared parking spaces directly to their south, and that gets them to their requirement of 58 parking spaces for their development. The dash purple lines throughout here illustrate their, both the existing sidewalk system and what they're proposing on their site. So the main spine for Ethan Allen is just the sidewalk that will extend east-west, south of their building. They also have the ability to navigate around their building. And then all of these, all of these brouts are also ADA accessible, so there's a marked crossing here, and there's a marked crossing to the south here, and will likely require, I haven't checked with Public Works, I'm going to follow up with them today, striping for this crossing here, which provides access to additional handicap spaces here. But most of that stuff actually occurs offsite, so it wouldn't be part of this approval anyway. It would just be things that were going to get done through the construction drawings. Finally, the dash red lines shown within Marshall are the reflective of the bike lanes that are in the area. We're not requesting any or requiring any bike lane improvements. There are none that are currently existing within the marketplace. They are providing two bicycle parking racks, but there's no lane improvement and there's no roadway improvement associated with this proposal. The proposed, so this is the site plan that came with the application. The proposed 11,971 square foot commercial building on Lot 12 is roughly 90 feet wide at its widest and 155 feet long, and it's oriented north-south linkwise. As situated, the building faces to the south. This is the front of the building. It meets all its applicable setback requirements from the marketplace PD. The front faces south towards the primary parking areas. The building is cited. The sighting of the building in relation to Fifth Avenue, Marshall Road, and the access, drive-in parking areas provides the building with good visibility in all directions. In addition to the 12,000 square foot building footprint, 31,000 square feet of hard surface improvements are proposed, which include the parking, sidewalk, and drive aisles. The FDP materials include a separate circulation and access plan that's not shown in this presentation, but this plan clarifies the necessary emergency vehicle access, as well as ADA, pedestrian access, ramps, et cetera, from the parking spaces and across drive aisles have been afforded. The remaining 24,000 square feet of the site will be landscaped, and we'll get into that landscape plan later. A monument sign is proposed within this development on the northern part of the site, and this is consistent. If we go back to this slide, you can see the other monument signs, so we have them in line, and they're the exact same shape and size of sign that's proposed elsewhere with the town center. In addition to the monument sign, they're also proposing that retaining wall that I mentioned on the west side of their property, that's four feet in height, and runs a fairly good stretch from roughly here down to the corner of their property. The other thing that this site plan clarifies is the location of their recycling and trash enclosure to the east of their building. Getting into the building elevation drawings, they illustrate the height. Materials and colors proposed for the store. The south and west elevations are reflected on this sheet, as is a sample of the proposed stone and an updated table at the bottom of the sheet that clarifies the percentages of materials proposed on each facade. The prints that went out to you guys on Friday, I did not have a correct table. This, this sheet does. It's already been updated. The height of the principal parapet is 22 and a half feet tall, with the taller central columns extending to a height of 27 feet. Both heights are within the 35-foot marketplace height allowance. The horizontal dash lines here on each elevation show the actual roof height, so there's a tall parapet that helps screen what they've kind of shaded in as their proposed RTU unit, so their rooftop electrical units for HVAC, will be completely screened by these parapets. As illustrated, the primary building materials are stone, stucco, and glass. Black window trim, awning signage, and exterior lights will accent the primary materials and colors, which are beige, stucco, and a red stone. And these colors and materials were chosen to blend in with the existing marketplace architecture. The material percentage table at the bottom clarifies that this proposal will fall shy of the requirements for a major building envelope for the building's front elevation, where 22% of the stone is proposed and 30% is required, and 19% of glazing is proposed, where 25% is required. This table, however, also illustrates that the proposal exceeds the standards for other building elevations, and staff has worked closely with the applicant to strike what we feel is an appropriate balance for the amount of materials on each side. And it's both an old and kind of complicated planned element that we are working with, where this site was identified back in 1998 as a major pad site, which allowed up to 20,000 square feet of development. Ethan Allen's proposing 12,000 square foot pad site, which kind of comes into play when we apply certain standards, one of which is the building materials and another is the landscaping requirements. So staff is actually supportive of what we're getting from this proposal, and a lot of that we wouldn't be getting through a straight application of the major building envelope. It doesn't have the same requirements for glazing on the side of the buildings. And so, and if you look at this closely, it's, we're averaging about 20% around the building for, closer to 20, 25% for the stone, where 30 is required for major building envelopes, and it's for the front, and only 15% is required for the sides. And then we're also getting more glazing out of this building than we would if we applied those major building envelopes. So what we are looking for basically, based on where this is within the marketplace and the fact that it's visible from all four sides, was this type of a balanced approach. And the other, other thing I would add to that kind of analysis is that where they're deficient on their stone here really kind of comes in with their front. Like you see that these other elevations have more stone on it, but this is, this is to accentuate the fact that this is the building, the primary building entrance. So there's a little bit less stone on this front, but this also sticks out eight feet and will be stoned on, or have stone on each side. So it's a little bit complicated, but overall, staff is comfortable with what we're, what we're getting out of this. So this reflects the south and west building elevations, and then these reflect the north and east building elevations. The rear of the building is actually the north, so what's going to be along Marshall does not have as many windows as the other proposals, other elevations do. The other thing I'd like to clarify is that the PD back in 1998 didn't allow black, and they encouraged white and green awnings within the marketplace, which is what you kind of see out there. Ethan Allen has requested black as an accent, and staff is supportive of it. It's a more contemporary kind of request now for black to be an accent material, and it's also very important to Ethan Allen's branding. So those are among the concessions that are being requested from Ethan Allen for this development, which is occurring almost 20 years after the PD was proposed. So amongst the other, I guess, little architectural features is you have columns on each side, kind of central columns with the stone, that extend ground floor to ceiling, and then the parapets, which provide some additional accent. There's also columns proposed fairly regularly, which provide some articulation on each, on each facade. The other thing that Ethan Allen is requesting, oh, is a wall sign on each elevation, and the PD was written to only allow three, but for similar reasons, the staff is requiring the foresighted architecture. We feel that a foresighted signed building in this location is also appropriate. So staff is supportive of these kind of architectural exception requests. Moving on to the applicant's utility plan, this kind of gets us back to the same discussion we had for the easements. We have irrigation line and an electric line running along the western portion of the property, and this expands in this corner to allow for the additional irrigation infrastructure. There's even electrical routing to the irrigation that exists out here that needs to be encompassed within that easement, so that town, the town can have access to maintain it. The other ones all kind of originate, other than the storm drain line that we mentioned, all originate in the southeast corner of the building, and the dry utility lines run along the property edge, and then the water meter that staff needs is located in the southeastern corner of the site. The other utility lines become private over here after they leave. The water and sanitary sewer are private, so they don't need a newment staff, or the town does not maintain beyond the water meter. I think that covers it for the utilities. Moving on to the proposed lighting plan, the top left corner kind of shows the three lighting fixtures that are proposed in this design. The two existing lights are actually shown on here, too. Those, those aren't reflected here. The proposing two parking lot lights, which is with this head here. This is the, the sconce light that's proposed around each, on each tower element, so around the building entrance, they're shown here and here. And then there's wall packs that are proposed to add additional lighting, and that's not as well reflected, but it's basically a full cutoff light, and it's also black, so they're all consistent in color. The lighting meets the requirements. We've clarified that this elevation here hasn't been updated and still needs to be updated to remove some of the wall packs that were originally shown. That was one of the technical corrections that staff listed in there in the memo. Moving on to the landscape plan, this landscape plan illustrates the types, locations, sizes, and general care of the plans proposed. Ethan Allen's plan reflects a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs, as well as ornamental grasses and perennials. The landscape plan on the left also clarifies, the landscape plan on the left? I must have written something wrong, sorry. The landscape plan over here clarifies that the, oh, in the northwest corner, clarifies that this existing landscaping is going to remain, so the new landscaping is shown in a darker gray. In general, this landscape plan is designed to provide an ample landscaping around the northern and western sides of the proposed building, as well as along the eastern side of the proposed parking. Landscaping to the south of the building is really limited to kind of parking lot islands here, here, and here, but there's dense landscaping providing kind of foundational landscaping on the north, north side and on the west side, and then sufficient landscaping to screen the parking lot. As we noted already, the utilities are located here, so there's just a ground cover sod, a fescue sod proposed in most of this location, and many landscape plantings or larger landscape plantings wouldn't be appropriate here, anyway. But one of the reasons that Ethan Allen's requesting some leniency in the landscape standard is because their size of their property's smaller in relation to their lot size, so they have a bunch of open space requirements, and meeting the landscape trees and shrubs and all that stuff for 43% of a lot that's, that's still open and not developed would be difficult. Furthermore, the town over the years has heard nothing but concerns about mature landscaping, blocking the signage and visibility of buildings, and so we were careful with that, and you can see how these kind of open sightlines designations have applied, so that you can still see the building. So we're comfortable with this design. We also followed up with landscape architect to kind of clarify some of the species selection substitutions that were requested, and he kind of voluntarily cut down those to be a little bit more consistent with what's, what's existing out there and what was approved through the PD. The five remaining exceptions are listed here, and they're, the reason for it. So a red oak is being replaced with a different type of oak in order to improve the sightlines for the deciduous tree. One of the deciduous shrubs, there wasn't a specification for this color, so they added a rose, a rose color, and they just did that for, really for aesthetics and durability. Evergreen shrubs, we asked them as a staff, we don't, juniper shrubs tend to be a maintenance nightmare, so we suggested they do something different, and we're supportive of the cotton Easter that they're, that they've suggested in place. And then, you know, they've introduced a different type of ornamental grass for this, this reason, and we're supportive of that as well. And then finally, this ground cover is just to provide some variety out there, so that we don't have too much of the same kind of ground cover covering the, but this is an, I wasn't aware that we had evergreen ground covers. I did learn that through this review. So that's what's proposed for, for one of the ground covers, and it just is an exception that wasn't contemplated through the PD. The staff's supportive of the overall landscape plan, and Parks and Rec has done their review of this application as well. Finally, we get to the site details, and this just kind of gives us some, you know, additional information on the size of the signs that are proposed. They're black with a white acrylic lettering, so the, the letters are the only thing that are really going to be illuminated. The background's about 70 square feet in size, and the actual sign area is closer to 25 square feet. Those are the wall signs. This is that monument sign, so if you are remembering what the signs out in front of Costco look like, they're all designed just like this, but typically they have two tenants allowed. This is Ethan Allen's property, so we're comfortable with them taking up the sign space. This detail on the size of the sign isn't actually in here, but this square measures very comparably to this square. It's actually slightly smaller, so we're recommending that the 25-square-foot sign allowance be applied to their monument sign as well. Their park, their trash and, or recycling enclosure is going to have the same finishes as the building, and this finish, which is comparable to the building, is also comparable to the other signs. Finally, Ethan Allen's site furnishings are also different than what was approved way back in 1999. I'm not sure they can still find those fixtures, but it's also more appropriate that they have something a little bit more modern and current that goes with their current plan and meets or matches in terms of finishes. So they're proposing the black bench, the black bicycle rack, as well as their black tricycle, or trash receptacles, which are all located in the front of the building. I didn't cover that. But they're all, there's a bench on each side of the entrance, as well as a trash enclosure, and then two bicycle racks right there. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. You have, the three conditions were outlined in your memo, and I think I touched on them here. The first one's your typical technical corrections. The second one relates to the requirement for those off-site easements being established and shown on the plat, and then the last one is just that the replat portion of this application needs to be recorded before the final development plan.
Thanks, Stephen.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions for Stephen? No?
I have questions, but I'm, I don't know if I want to hear the applicant first and then...
Okay. Bob, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
I would just love to say thank you to all of the members for your kind consideration, especially for Stephen and his guidance throughout the process. We met back in March, and I think he's been a wonderful alliance to our team, and MCG Architects, Kevin, and Brian, and Fred have been terrific. We've worked on many buildings together. This is our fourth roundup building.
We should probably get your name for the record before you go.
I'm Doug Diefenbach. I'm vice president of Design Center Development for Ethan Allen. Ethan Allen, if you don't know about our company, we're a national, international brand for that matter. We've been around for 85 years. I've been with the company for nearly 40 of those 85 years, and we have a vertically-integrated company, so we manufacture our products and we retail our products through more than 300 Ethan Allen retail design centers. We currently have a location in Westminster, and that location is going to be closed. I've got a team in Westminster that is very excited to be relocating here to Superior. I met with them today, this morning. I came in from Connecticut and very happy to have this opportunity and very looking forward to, you know, getting this project underway and, and, you know, developing the property with your support. And Kevin or Brian, do you have any other technical information to add to the, to the presentation? And Kevin or Brian, do you have any other technical information to add to the presentation?
We're here for a quick answer question.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much. I'm just curious, the store in Westminster, is that the one on Wadsworth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And I think you probably know, and one of the things, the important things, the nature of retail is changing right now, as I'm sure you know. And all of the surrounding retail in that particular shopping area, there's a lot of vacancies. It's probably more than 50% vacant. And it's been a concern of ours for a long time. We've owned the property here, as I've mentioned, as Stephen mentioned, and we've wanted to get up here. And the economic conditions in the late 2000s made it very difficult. You know, everybody had to kind of tighten their reins, and especially with home building really coming to a halt in the late 2000s. We are very tied to the home building. And Superior, there's been a great deal of growth. We've been following the market. We're very happy with the location that we chose, and we're excited about what we think we're going to be able to achieve here with our clients. One of the things that separates Ethan Allen, and I can pass this around, our team, our design team, is very focused on doing interior design jobs for our clients. The thing that differentiates Ethan Allen is personal service. They'll come out to your home and do a design custom for your home. We're not really in the commodity business, although we sell furniture. We're known for our brand, we're known for our quality, and we're known for our design. So if there was anybody that was interested in looking at some of our interiors, I have that, and I have a couple of sample buildings that we've built. We're international, we're all over the world, for that matter. And I've been involved in many, really all over the world in my travels. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a couple of questions here from some of the commissioners. Lisa, you want to go first?
Hey. Thank you so much. Just overall, I like the project. I think that the changes to that you guys are trying to incorporate with more modern design while still working within the marketplace PD. Overall, I really like, I'm supportive of the black. I like that more broadly. I'd be supportive if, over time, we, you know, could see that elsewhere in the marketplace. I like it. Couple concerns, and this is the perfect slide for it. Just personally, I don't like it when we have these parapets that step, as you can see here, and particularly with this cornice design, and you have it just on the flat elevation. It just, you can tell it's a false front, right? From a visibility perspective. I don't know if they're going to be really visible, but kind of this effect that you have going on right here, I don't know. Personally, I think it looks better if you're bringing these in back a little bit more, you're wrapping the cornice around so that it doesn't appear just like it's stuck up there. So that would be something I think could really improve. I think the rest of the building, I think the quality of the rest of the building looks really good. And I think when these aren't treated well, it can really detract from the overall effect. The trash enclosure, I understand you guys are pretty constrained from a site design But the trash enclosure here with parking on either side, recognizing, you know, here's your primary entrance, you probably aren't going to have a lot of clients over here, but just really want to, I guess, bring to... Is this really an ideal location for your trash, right? You're not a restaurant, so you maybe not have to worry about odor maybe as much as some other trash enclosures might have, but I don't know. I'm not sure what your other options are. That just gave me pause. I do, though, overall, support the reduced parking requirement and shared parking across the way. I think that's awesome all the way. From a connectivity perspective, you know, I get why sidewalks aren't necessarily proposed on this side. They're not shown in the overall PD plan. But from a policy perspective as a town, I don't like not providing sidewalk connections when we have the opportunity, and now is when we have the opportunity to do so. Again, recognizing we'd be, you know, not necessarily connecting into a finished network out here on Marshall, but I see kind of potentially a missed opportunity for a sidewalk here.
You were saying along the western edge, right?
On the western side, right? And then I think my other comments are related more as the town. One, this whole property right has been vacant and not landscaped, and now we're just going to have kind of this little sliver remaining. And I'm wondering from the town if we have any ability to require more of a finished landscape for this property. It's just going to appear a kind of remnant.
Not on a property that's not owned by the applicant, yeah.
Right. Yeah, no, I get that it's not really part of tonight's discussion, but I just want to raise the question from a town perspective. You know, this is finished nicely, this is finished nicely, and then we're going to have kind of this dead strip there in the middle. It'd be nice if we had a way to engage the developer and...
Yeah, I mean, it's something we could try to... We're going to have to work with them on the easement, so, yep.
And then also, just kind of a bigger picture question, again, not really related to this particular application, but more broadly, we have the Northwest Small Area Plan that we're undertaking. We have ULI TAP recommendations. We have some potential opportunity right now with other vacancies in the development. Again, you guys have the right to develop. I understand you own this property, but some of the reconfiguration, bigger picture ideas will be harder to do if this property develops as shown. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, and we are aware. And we related that to Ethan Allen, and Ethan Allen actually responded with an application that had the development on the far western side of the property.
Yeah.
And did not wrap... Originally, their proposal from 2007 had parking north of the site, and that's what they're... They kind of came back in with a similar proposal to what they showed in 2007, and we consolidated this as much as we could, eliminated as much parking as we could, cut down the drive aisle, and then left this as developable for the lot to the east as possible. And Ethan Allen even had conversations with that property owner about doing a boundary line adjustment if they were interested, and we got nowhere.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. That's great that you've accommodated and worked with them on that. So I think that's probably...
And Ethan Allen's been receptive to it as well, so...
I would like to, if I could, speak to a couple of your comments, because I think we can accommodate absolutely your initial comment with regard to the returns on the parapet walls. I think that that suggestion of going deeper into the building, maybe three feet, I don't know if that would make sense to you, but three feet and perhaps the way it's wrapped...
Wrap the cornice, maybe.
Would make it look more like a design element than if it were bread sliced, if you will, or something like that. It just gives it... I agree. I think that that makes it a more finished look.
Okay.
And then with regard to the comment about the recycling, Ethan Allen generates very, very little trash. We will use all the merchandise in there as a display item, and then all of the product that our clients order is coming into our delivery warehouse in Aurora and gets delivered directly to their homes. So it never shows up at this building. Think of this as more of a showroom.
Gotcha.
And it gets adjusted occasionally, but it doesn't generate very much trash.
And that'll help that look good over time. You know, just sometimes you see the trash enclosure areas, when they're serviced really frequently and you've got a lot of food waste, they become really nasty. And so that helps, I think, alleviate some of the concern on that, but just something...
We're meticulous, both inside and outside in the care, because we believe that's what you project, is what your, you know, clients believe you're all about.
Right.
And we're very careful about maintaining our properties.
Good to hear.
Hi. My name's Kevin Karas. 800-8 East Rappel Court, MCG Architecture. I just figured I'd follow up on some technical aspects of that trash enclosure. I don't know if I've got a laser pointer here, a little bit, yeah. But that's located here because we don't want to put it over the top of utilities.
Yeah, I see you're really constrained.
We didn't want to slide it towards the front of the stores if we could help it. So in all worlds, it's probably the best location for putting it. That's all.
No, fair enough.
We could explore the height. I hadn't really noticed that the height was six foot eight, and I've never really looked into how tall these things need to be. But if we can drop the height a little bit, it wouldn't be quite as obtrusive.
Yeah, I don't know, right? Like, what's better, if you're concealing it or if it's...
Yeah, you want to conceal, but they're not that tall, so...
Yeah, true.
I guess typically your dumpsters are like on the five to six-foot range of height. And then if you drop the walls down a little bit, you'd probably see some of the dumpster top.
Yeah, I know. That's a... Yeah. Okay.
No, we'll keep it as is.
Did you have anything else, Lisa?
Nope, that's it.
Bob, did you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a few things. I agree with the sidewalk on the west side. I know we don't have a sidewalk down on Marshall, but there is an intent to, I believe, build the bikeway along that section across the other side of Marshall at some point. Is that correct? True. So just having pedestrian access down there, I think, would be a good thing to see happen. I'm not sure whose responsibility that is, but the... I do like the idea of the black accents and the black awnings, but I've been through most of the development there. We have denied Buffalo Wild Wings yellow, we denied IHOP blue, we, you know, we've denied everybody, and I'm not sure what the board will do, but I think it's...
The board's been more receptive. I mean, we have like the Party City sign that went... I mean, it used to be everything that the signage was white. So the board's been more receptive of recently, and so has the town manager, so that's... And I also think that, you know, due to the Ethan Allen branding, that's kind of where we landed with the black. This actually, the first application that came in had a lot more dark colors, like grays and darker grays and blacks. And so as far as the overall facade colors go, this is kind of the balance we ended up striking. But we are willing to relate any comments you guys have or recommendations that you have.
So, I mean, you know, we've denied it in the past, but I would agree, I'd love to see some, a little bit more diversity in the center, but it might be worth, I mean, just making a point of allowing people to use our brand colors in that development. Are the signs lighted or are they backlit? And how are they... Can you, can somebody talk to the lighting of these signs, on which sides, and how are they lit?
They're backlit. So the only thing you're going to actually see is the lettering. And that doesn't show it all as well. Maybe this one shows a little better. So the top left is close to... It's a metal sign with a white acrylic lettering, and it's backlit, so...
I have an example from another location, just to give you, you know, a sense of it. It's a very clear sign, and it's an LED push-through.
Okay.
It's a little white on the black. There's a lot of contrast there.
Okay.
And it's a strong sign.
Okay. Okay. And I know there's been a lot of lighting changes and issues over various developments. When Costco went in, there was no lighting permitted in the PD. They don't have a lit sign. We didn't permit it. And it changed at some point, and then we started allowing lit signs. Is that across the whole PD? And like, and I know like the section along Marshall Road facing original town, not lit signs, we have a problem.
Yeah, those are the restrictions that I'm aware of, is that they just don't face the residential streets, because there are lit signs in the marketplace.
Yeah.
Verizon maybe being the best example right now.
And just like to be sensitive as to who can see those signs, how bright they are. And I, you know, that seems far enough removed from, and I was kind of trying to follow it on Google Earth and get a sense of where...
Yeah.
What the visibility was, because we have the neighborhoods that can see over there. I suspect that...
I think it's pre-contained, but it's something we can look at more if you'd like.
Yeah. Wouldn't mind just getting an idea. I think Culcris Crossing's blocked from it because of the strip. To come down, I don't think we can see it from our corner. No, we can see our... It's out of the look, but just want to be thoughtful about how bright that is.
Right.
And then I think we've even had discussions about whether they get turned off at certain points, right? And that they're not on 24/7.
That's a good point. And we've applied a condition that we could apply to this one.
Yeah, so just like to look at that.
Yeah. Usually, they go off half an hour after the building closes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably less important for that south-facing sign than the other three, which are facing the highways or the highway. And well, the site furnishings and the lights, I was just kind of perusing around on Google Earth, trying to get a sense of what was there. They are going to look very different, I think, than what's out there. And I kind of understand we can't necessarily meet and match exactly what's there. I guess I'd encourage you just, I don't necessarily need to pass comment too far on this, but encourage you to just... It's going to look odd if they're completely different than the buildings that they're right near.
Yeah, and that's the thing, is they're not really... They're not near much. I mean, they're the closest to like the niche across the parking lot or the public works facility. And I guess there's a new bike shop going in right next to the niche, but...
And are the lights really different? Because as you go down, there are lights along Fifth.
There are lights along Fifth, and the lights that they have along Fifth aren't changing.
They're going to match.
So they have the same... Yeah, there's no update proposed to those two lights. So the two parking lot lights are here, and the shape of the light is comparable to what we have out there. Some of the heads for the lights are double-headed, so they would have this going in each direction, but they only need the light to go towards the west, so they have a single-head fixture. This is kind of different than what we normally allow in the terms of, we don't usually allow for anything that's exposed. They agreed to frost it, and then I went out and did a site visit, and we don't have 100% downcast lighting within the PD out there. So, I mean, if you guys would prefer to move in that direction, that's something we could require. But this is something that's fairly muted, it has a frosted glass, and it's really to kind of, it's kind of the decorative light feature for their tower elements, so... They weren't...
An example of that, both in daylight and in the night, so...
Sure.
It's a very classic design feature, and I think it's relatively soft.
Okay. Yeah, that's really, I think that's all I've got. Is that it? Anybody else have anything?
Good, thank you.
Phyllis?
I have a couple of questions. What is the retaining wall? The purpose of the retaining wall?
So the retaining wall is to get the grades right for the building site in relation to the road, so the building doesn't sit too much lower than the road. You kind of drop off after you get off the road with that site out there now. But one of the primary reasons really is to get this ADA ramp to be accessible, so a lot of that retaining was to keep this as an ADA-accessible route. But you're not going to see, I mean, based on the landscaping, it's fairly densely landscaped on both sides. I don't know how much of that wall you're going to see once this landscape's more mature. So it's a four-foot-tall wall at its peak, but it tapers off to the north and the south. Yeah. And most of it is really to kind of get the grades right across, going from west to east.
Okay. The other one I have is there's no access onto Marshall from this site.
Nope.
It's all interior to the...
Correct. Yep.
Marketplace. Okay.
And that wall, as it relates to a potential sidewalk along the west side, would it have to be adjusted?
So I haven't responded to that yet, sorry. We have discussed with the engineer, and we have, we kind of threw that out there a little bit late in the review process. It was like last week or the week before last, after we had a couple rounds of review on this. And Alex Aronero provided the context that they are hoping for a crossing, you know, on Marshall from the proposed US 36 bikeway lane that's going to be on the north side of Marshall to get to the town center. So we will, we have requested that they explore that. I was kind of at the same time, we were trying to figure out all their utilities and how they were going to either be combined or be on one side of the wall or the other. So I think that they could put a five-foot wide sidewalk on that side, but we need to know the grades. I mean, whenever we put a sidewalk in, half of the concern is, can it be ADA-accessible? Because it has to be. There's a little bit more allowance with something right next to a roadway than there is otherwise, but so it's something we're exploring or currently exploring, and we're hoping to have the CDs catch up to that. I have, I mean, we can ask the applicant, but my impression is that they're willing to explore that. It would affect their landscaping, and so we wouldn't have as much landscaping on this side of the wall. So I'd want to look at that and kind of clarify what we'd actually prefer. But it's something that we could explore, and then we'd probably want to have that landscaping, you know, be relocated somewhere. But it would, and then maybe that wall finished differently. So it may have a little bit of a domino effect if we do make the change.
Yeah, okay.
Anthony, did you have anything?
Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you. That was a great presentation, as always, Stephen.
Thank you.
And welcome, gentlemen, this evening, and thank you for coming forward with this. Whenever there's a new project, I'm always excited to hear about that and to see what can be brought into our community. So I wanted to say, first of all, I'm pretty overall excited about the possibility of excited about the possibility of having you in our town, and then moving forward with your project. There's a couple of things that have come up for me, though. I've spoke with a number of tenants in the marketplace, and one of their, or some of their concerns are, one, visibility, two, connected, connectivity. And one of the things that seems pretty obvious to me is that, based on this current plan, there might be a, a little bit of separation. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we don't miss out as a town, and as for you as well, the opportunity to have a little bit more connectivity there with some of the other tenants in the marketplace. Particularly around, in the narrative point Q and T, there was no, let me get back to that. So no landscaped areas in, within the parking lot, so that's not applicable there in this, in this summary and, and this narrative. Also, there's no pedestrian circulation within the parking areas, so none of those are applicable with this plan. And I'm just, again, wanting to make sure that we don't miss out on an opportunity to have that, so that you're not on an island by yourself, and so that there is some connectivity with the other tenants in, in the marketplace. So I don't know if, you know, if there's any possibility for you to look at that, or if there's anything that our town might like to see in, in terms of that, and in support of some of the other tenants that are already here.
I think those are good points, but I, I guess the one thing I'd clarify is that, you know, these are site-specific development applications, we can't require off-site improvements. We, we can request them, and they've agreed to some, one of which was, so this parking area is already existing, but the sidewalk, this joining sidewalk isn't, so they're gonna run this sidewalk, and then with the approval of the adjacent property owner, they, they're willing to run this property, or this sidewalk all the way to the east to the end of this, so that it, it gets that connectivity that you're talking about, at least to some degree. I think the bigger issue is, you know, that there isn't a lot of, you know, well-placed sidewalks or kind of safer, you know, kind of buffered sidewalks within the, the larger marketplace. And, you know, we, we probably want to look at that at some point, but I think that's more of a, like, kind of marketplace-wide exploration. And I do think that the space is probably there to have some, you know, decent improvements.
I think one of the nice features that NCG designed into the overall site, and this particular sidewalk ties in perfectly straight line with the sidewalk that leads directly over Costco, so it's a direct straight shot. So I think that there's an attempt at least to attract people directly safely from Costco where they're walking on pedestrian pathway rather than, you know, to a parking lot, towards a nice straight shot. And that was, you know, a small nod, and a nod to connectivity, and I certainly agree with you, because I.
Can you go to the mic, sorry?
Can you stand up to the mic there if you would, please?
We just can't hear you in the.
But I, I certainly am concerned with the building being so far away, you know, from the other buildings in the center, so I'm glad to hear you bring up a point like that. We want that connectivity to the best of our ability, so. And I think that making it attractive and making it an easy walk for people, I think will attract them. And I think the landscaping, and I think all of that will help.
Thank you.
There's a lot of potential out there, so.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want us to miss that opportunity, and I don't want us to set this project up to fail. You know, we hope that you're here for a long time and that you're very successful, and that your, your business goes well. So that's just one of the concerns that I've heard from other tenants in that development, in the overall development. One of the other things that came up for me, and I know you're well within your right to have your monument sign have your name on it, but once again, is there an opportunity to, again, bring in other tenants to either an additional monument sign when you build out there, or a, a larger sign, so that there is greater visibility for some of those other tenants? And, and I do appreciate that that's not, you know, necessarily what you're trying to do, and, you know, is not necessarily, you know, of interest to you, but it is for me. And again, in speaking with some of the other tenants, they, they're asking for more visibility, they're asking for more connectivity, and I think that if we have opportunities to do that, maybe we should look at, at that.
I think, certainly, I'd like to respond to that. I mean, I, I certainly understand the, the comment. I think it would be difficult for Ethan Allen, we feel that we might be jeopardizing our brand identity.
Sure.
I think one of the things we have to be careful with, my chairman always cautions me in any development, who are the neighbors, because you're gonna get judged by your neighbors, and you're gonna get, you have to really be a part of that development, as you well know. But to have someone else's sign or someone else's identity on our property would be a difficult thing for us, I think.
No, I, I do understand that. And maybe that's one of the things that our town can look at as we move forward with the rest of the development of that area. And then just one kind of a, a thing that's kind of on, on a side, is I'm looking at your operational hours, they show that you're from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and kind of wonder if that's sufficient for your needs and the needs of our community and how that was set.
We're absolutely open to later hours, especially, usually Monday and Thursday are the nights we'd like to stay open until eight or nine, and I think if we, as we go further in the process, if you have a certain recommendation for that topic, we'd be more than happy to do it, but I know that Thursday night and Monday night are, are nights that we do a lot of, you know, house calls and a lot of really good interaction with our clients.
Okay. And then just one last thing for me, and I'll stop, I promise. In, in terms of what you need from us, are there any other variances that you need from us? What are we looking at in terms of breaking ground and potential or possible completion or opening date?
I think that you're gonna have to help me with this, and, and Steve and I think we're seeking your approval, and we would like to get started as rapidly as we could. We're working with Kevin and Brian and Fred on figuring out with the recommendations that you're giving us, what's gonna be the best way to get these architectural plans ready, and then through Stephen and the team, and over to the building department for a building permit. We'd love to get in the ground as soon as we can, we could. If we were able to open in June, July, we'd love that. I know that the weather is certainly gonna play a part in that, but ideally, that's our objective, is to open as quickly as we could. We've waited a long time, and we're ready, so.
Great.
And I know the team that I met with today, they said, you better really do your best tonight, because they want to hear that we're opening soon, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Anthony? Good?
Guys, nice call.
Just a few comments. I'm not, I'm not gonna rehash everything my fellow commissioner said, but I support you, all of it, all very good ideas. I would like to really emphasize Commissioner Stewart's comments about how excited we are that you're in our community. I agree, I'd like to see you get this off the ground as soon as possible. The variances that, that you've asked for, I don't see that large of a problem with at all. ULI study that Commissioner Ritchie brought up is a concern of mine that doesn't, it's not a concern of yours, it's a concern of the towns. But I, I think there, there could be some solutions there, because there's a lot of property there. There's a lot of dead parking space that, you know, you could shift that whole thing And, and so that's it, I'm very excited for it, I think it looks fantastic.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any members of the public here who want to make any comments? I don't think we do, do we? Just wanted to check. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Comments, if there are any remaining comments.
Yeah, I think overall, I think, you know, our comments were good. I think if we had to go from like a, what would we prefer landscaping or a sidewalk, I, I would vote for a sidewalk, but I don't know, I'm curious to hear, you know, how everybody else feels if.
Where does that sidewalk go, though?
Well, again, it, right now, right, so right now, it doesn't, it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere, right? And I acknowledge that, but, you know, now's our opportunity to get one. The site's under consideration for development. We are adding new bike infrastructure up here, right, like you potentially could do a crossing. I just hate to see a missed opportunity. So, that's.
The sidewalk goes to nowhere on both ends, really. And, and I mean, it's, this study that we're doing on Northwest Superior, a lot, a lot of comments have come out about this area, and I, I don't think we, I mean, I think it's great if we can talk about it when a development opportunity like this comes up, but, but like Stephen said, it's a site-specific development and sort of limited in, in what we can do, other than to maybe point out some of these problems. This has never been a good pedestrian, there's never been even reasonable pedestrian access throughout this development. I mean, we walk over there a lot, we can get to Target relatively comfortably, you know, PetSmart sorta, kinda, you know, and as close as that is, you'd think that'd be super easy, but it's even a little weird, you know? Yeah, so, and the sidewalks on either, you know, when you come to the circle, there are no, there's no pedestrian, there's no obvious pedestrian access like through the circle, like, anywhere. Yeah, nothing.
The red is the sidewalk?
Well, sort of, it kind of goes up here and it dies, and it does go up on this side, it goes up to, to the, to Costco and Target and all, but there's nothing, there's, there's, like, it dies, it dies almost everywhere, and it never really gets across the circle. So that, so that sidewalk, but, but, you know, there is a long sidewalk that runs along the parking area.
To the south of this.
Yep, and then, and then runs north, and then deadends at the Ethan Allen parking, and the idea was that it would continue on to Marshall Road, so that eventually maybe we can cross to the bikeway when that gets built next year? Is that 2018?
Yeah, it's supposed to be 2018, you're right.
So, yeah, but. I'm not sure how much to talk about that tonight, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we just can, I don't know.
You can make it a condition, or you can have me put it in the summary of your guys' notes, it's up to you. But it's a, it's a good, it's a good practice to try to get, you know, it is a little bit difficult when it doesn't, it's a little easier argument when there's something that it actually connects to.
Right.
And I think that there is an argument due to the fact that that US 36 bikeway will, you know, need a crossing at some point, so.
And the study, the ULI study that, that brings Marshall Road, you know, reroutes Marshall Road in its design, how, I don't have that in my head as to whether.
It came right down Fifth. It came right down Fifth Avenue.
But so much so that Ethan Allen, it would be better if that building were, were farther to the east, I guess that would be, or does it matter?
There's all sorts of play on the other side with parking.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, I was looking at that, going, I mean, yeah, you, you have some thoughts on.
I just want to make sure, and it sounds like Stephen and staff have evaluated that, I don't, I don't remember the specifics of the alignment, I just know that with some vacancies out there right now, I would just hate to see us kind of miss, again.
Yeah.
Use that same term, miss an opportunity here to consider kind of future redevelopment, but it sounds like you guys have thought through that.
As much as we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing for sale.
Right.
Within what Bricksmore owns, and there wasn't a lot of receptivity from them on changing boundary lines or anything like that.
Then, and then it sounds like you guys have worked within this particular lot to accommodate what you can.
As much as we could, yeah.
So I think, I, I think you've done what you can on that.
And is there a pad to the east?
There is, but it's a strange.
Yeah, I'm looking at, like, where, you know, again, I'm trying to look at it, it's hard to tell from there, I don't know if you have a Google Maps view of it.
Yeah, I don't, but, uh.
But, um, it's.
So this pad site kind of goes down like this, and loops all the way down to the IHOP, or maybe IHOP comes in a little bit here or something, but this is kind of the configuration of Lot 3, and there's another lot just south of this.
So there are lots along the east edge of the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Here? This is the tract, this is the detention tract, but.
That's all detention tract, okay.
Yeah, but, so internally, there's.
Behind IHOP, that's all detention?
Directly north of IHOP, it's all detention and all by the town, correct.
Then you get to the corner of the parking lot, and there's one, one lot or two?
This one?
One little lot, right.
And then another one south of it, so kind of next to IHOP. IHOP site may actually go.
So there is, there is one directly north of IHOP?
No, not directly north, northwest, yeah. Directly north IHOP's all that detention area.
But the lots in the park.
IHOP's actual lot kind of continues.
So there's parking there now? Is that, is that, is that the parking area?
Where?
Where you're saying that other lot is by IHOP?
This is all parking, correct. All those lots kind of between Ethan Allen, IHOP, and the In-Mine stores along.
Is that all owned by Bricksmore? The, or the, or the?
Yeah.
Okay, so that parking lot, any of that has opportunity to do things with, provided Bricksmore be interested in doing it, right?
Correct, yeah. Costco owns their property, Target owns theirs.
Okay.
And mostly the rest of the site, besides Ethan Allen, is owned, and RTD is owned by Bricksmore.
So even that lot next to Ethan Allen is a Bricksmore?
Correct.
Lot, okay.
Both to the south and to the east.
Okay, and so, and then coming, coming, coming south where Buffalo Wild Wings is and the barbecue place and all that, that, that's all Bricksmore?
Correct.
Coming south through that parking over to an Office Max, is that all Bricksmore too, or is that?
I think it is, but I'm not 100% positive.
Okay, no worries, okay. So there's a lot of opportunity. I mean, Bricksmore's, I mean, I'm just thinking about their, you know, they, they, she attended the meeting, and, I mean, they're interested, and they'd love to see that area improved as well, so, you know, as I think is, that, just trying to get a sense of what the opportunity area is, so.
Mm-hmm.
And the parking in front of, of Costco and Target, that's all owned by Costco and Target respectively as well? All the way out to Fifth?
I believe so, yeah. I know Costco's is, I believe Target's is as well.
Okay, and Ross, and, or what's there now?
There's a section in the middle here that's owned by Bricksmore.
Okay. Those buildings in between?
Yep.
Target and Costco, okay. So I'm comfortable there's lots of opportunity in there to.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Figure, figure stuff out. But I agree with Anthony, they're, they're kind of way out over there, and, yeah. Working with, with, as we, as we think about the Northwest area plan, trying to pull things together as it makes sense would be.
Yeah, I think having that Ethan Allen building out there on the corner like that would really make it more handsome.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
And to have that handsome of a building with, with the cachet of your brand, I think it would be very nice.
Yeah. What would serve you well next door, seeing that there's a lot, I mean, are there things that work really well next to an Ethan Allen?
No, a medical use, we have.
Can you go back to the, or, you're mic, sorry?
We have some medical uses near us, an ophthalmological group is located near one of our locations in Connecticut. Really, the, the synergistic locations are gonna be professional offices, dentists, lawyers, things of that nature. From a retail perspective, we certainly would welcome home goods or other competitors in the market, because it's gonna bring in people that are interested in improving their homes. Certainly, we're gonna be on the upper echelon, where we're not gonna compete on a commodity level, so we would not want to see, you know, more of the discounters there, that's not really who we would like next to us.
Yeah.
That, and we certainly would not want a food use, because again, they're, they're gonna generate a lot of trash and a lot of, you know, you know, too many trips and things of that nature, so.
Yeah.
I think we're looking for, and certainly a jewelry store, things of that nature, Jared's would be great. Any of those kind of, you know, for your home and for your family development, that's what we're interested in.
Okay, thanks.
Your.
Anything else?
So just for my clarification, we're not being asked to split or divide this lot tonight or do anything like that.
Nope, no, the lot stays the same, it's just the easements and the vacations require the plaque.
Is, when does this go to the board, can I ask?
Next Monday.
Is there time to realistically evaluate if a sidewalk is feasible?
Um, no, not for the board, because those, those materials go out tomorrow or today, yeah.
So how, how would you recommend we approach that if we? Right, so, how, how would you recommend we judge that if we...
You could, it just has to be a condition, I mean, rather than, you know, right now, it's a little softer, where staff has just requested that they explore that and incorporate them on their construction drawings, should it be feasible, if you want something strong, I mean, staff's already had that conversation with them, but if you want something stronger that's tied to the, you know, this FDP, then you can certainly...
I'd like to see that, but I don't know, I'm not willing to follow my sword over it by any stretch, if you guys don't have some, strong opinions on it.
I, I mean, I, I think it's important, I mean, it's, it's the entry point from the bikeway into the marketplace, on that side of the marketplace, I think if you're coming down the bikeway, I mean, it needs to, yeah, going into Costco there with the gas station wouldn't make any sense, that's, that's insane, like, A, I would follow my sword for it, but I think it's important enough for us to recommend, you know, to put it in as a condition, I mean, it is a recommendation, so...
The town has been discussing it, so, the concept of being able to reach everything by walking and what have you.
Yeah, from a policy, it just seems like we'd be inconsistent with what our goals are as a town.
Yeah, I think, I think we should at least explore it, for sure.
And Commissioner Stewart's point of the connectivity and, and your agreement in that, I think if, if that Fifth Avenue actually gets shifted to the west, I think that's in line with what the ULI study, the TAP report was talking about, that, then there would be more of an opportunity, more space, let's say, to put that bike, or the sidewalk in, and then have it connect across Marshall Road to the bike path that Stephen was mentioning.
Mm-hmm.
Because Marshall Road, at, at that point, we've all been down there, the, the, the vehicles tend to gun it going around that corner.
Coming out, yep, it's hit the straightaway.
And so, that, that's gonna be an issue, and, you know, if we put a pedestrian crossway, crossway across there, and expect people to kinda slow down just for a crosswalk, I think it's gonna need to have more, I don't know, illumination, more, more...
Or we could put a stop sign there even, right, if that became more of an inch away?
Right.
There'd be, we'd need some additional control, probably, right?
We did drop that speed limit to 35, I mean, it used to be 50 when you came around that corner, and it was reduced to 35, and...
Yeah, that's where the road goes from two lanes to one lane, and everyone kinda jockeys for position there, and...
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think if, if the road moves to the west with the ULI study, I think that could be part of the infrastructure of that, and I agree with the connectivity, and if you can walk from original town all the way through the marketplace to Marshall Road, to that bike path, you can ride your bike from original town all the way through the marketplace, get your coffee, stop by Ethan Allen, do some shopping, and then cycle into Boulder.
Right. Yeah, I just think the study, though, is pretty pie in the sky at the moment, but, you know, I don't...
Yeah, I don't remember the specifics of the alignment, honestly, enough to know.
Yeah, or how realistic, I mean, there, there are a lot of other issues that come into play, bringing that road around through that marketplace and down through...
Where, where do you guys come in on the sidewalk from a feasibility?
I would say, certainly, I think initially, our preference would probably be to leave that as a future development as the need arose, and I think if you were looking to Ethan Allen, we could make a promise to do it at a certain time in the future, if that would suffice, I think, right now, looking at the overall location, I, I share the concern about the speed with which people run on Marshall Road, I've been out there a number of times, and, and people do, they come down the hill, and it's, it's moving pretty good right there. I think we've encouraged all of the developing pedestrian traffic through here, and I think at least initially, until the adjacent lot to the east gets developed, I would prefer to wait on adding the sidewalk, but certainly would be, you know, willing to, to do that in the future at some time, as required by the board.
Yeah, I don't know what the trigger would be, like, I don't know how to actually capture, you know, some sort of...
One, middle ground would be to get that same easement that we're contemplating through this to actually include a sidewalk easement.
Sure, and at least have it legally there.
I've certainly gone back to locations, you know, years later, and added sidewalks as development has occurred around a location, so...
Well, yeah, I guess, I mean, I just would encourage, I think, staff to think through, like, what a trigger might be, to add an easement at a minimum, I think that would be good, right, so that...
Well, the, the easement could, the easement could be created now without an obligation to...
Right, yeah, but the trigger to, like, require, when, at what point would require a sidewalk, I don't know how you...
I think if you go at the easement, it's at town's discretion, right, I mean, but then it probably becomes town's financial...
Town's responsibility to do it.
Liability as well, unless it's included in the subdivision improvement or development improvement agreement.
I think it could be if, if realignment of Marshall occurs, or development of the lot to the east occurs, or...
Or connectivity requires, or whatever.
I think if you guys can come up with some language, maybe...
See, now I was thinking, in terms of the bikeway, right, I mean, if you're coming down on a bike, and you wanna come into the marketplace, that's just another entry point.
So, upon...
That could be better to come in...
Upon installation of the bikeway.
Yeah, which is next year, so that, that's why I was, you know, in my head, that, that's a way to cut into Wayne's BBQ, that's a way to...
Sure. I think, at least initially, I think the look of the greenery and the landscaping, I think, would be very desirable, and I think there's quite a number of hardscape between the roads and the access lanes to the highway and all of that, it just might be nice, I think, in, in seeing a lot more landscaping, but certainly be happy to add it in the future.
Yeah, I guess my sense, my sense is that we're just not quite ready for the sidewalk that goes to nowhere, I, I think, I like the idea of the openness to putting one in down the road, the idea of putting an easement, or placing an easement on there, but, you know, until we get control of Marshall and make it a little more safe for those cyclists to traverse Marshall, I, I don't know if it's a great idea to be encouraging people to head down that direction, I, I could see us, a year from now, getting to a point where we do wanna put more of a turnoff there at some point, if you guys could be mindful of that, and kinda prepare the site for that, knowing that's down the road.
Well, it sounds like an easement would allow us to do that, right?
I think an easement, and just making sure the retaining wall, the final design of the retaining wall, that there's adequate width, right, like, that we wouldn't have to move the retaining wall...
There's 10 feet of separation between the retaining wall and the curb, for that 10 feet of easement that's required for the, so, we would have room for a 5-foot sidewalk or 6-foot sidewalk, and a minimal amount of some sort of ground cover on each side.
Okay.
Okay. And then the easement parapets, the...
Yeah, do we need to condition the change to the parapet design, since it won't be reflected in the town board, in the town, the plans that go to the town board?
I think, I mean, it's up to you, you have their word, that that's something they're willing to do, if you'd like to memorialize it, that's fine, too.
I guess I'd look to Stephen, if...
We could certainly add as a condition, I mean, so, if that...
We could also possibly consider a technical, staff technical correction.
We could, I could get that included in the town board's memo.
Okay.
I agree, I think that the board will want us to be mindful of that, and have that kind of more formal in the presentation to them, so that it's not one of those things that's up in the air.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sure that'll be a very long one, I guess, yeah.
Great.
So, 3-foot?
I don't know the right amount, I just think that, I don't wanna prescribe 3 feet, I don't...
Defer to the architect.
Yeah, I just defer to staff and the architect's design judgment, I think.
Okay.
Probably appropriate depth.
Yeah, it needs to be proportional to whatever else is going on, so, I, yeah.
And are all the plants and all, are they on our approved plant list, that they're, didn't totally follow all that?
There's only a few exceptions, most of them are on the PDE, I haven't reviewed them in relation to the town's guidelines, but the town's guidelines are a lot broader, the PD's pretty narrow plant list, but I can look at that, too, I mean, Patrick looked at it, so...
Okay, it's just been successful, right, you know?
For the most part, yeah, I mean, almost too successful, so, yeah.
Okay, further comments?
So, do we agree we wanna memorialize the parapets, right, and the easement for the sidewalk?
Sure, so I can make a motion for approval.
I guess, just before we do that, I wanna chime in and...
Oh, good.
Join with my fellow commissioners in welcoming you all to the town, I, personally, I think it's, I think it's wonderful, I, you guys have a great company, a great brand, well-known, it's, you know, the kind of high-end retail that I think we all would like to see more of, I think you're in a great location, you're gonna be drawing people from Boulder, Lewisville, Superior, you know, East, East County, it's a great spot, I hope you guys are very, very successful, you know, I think the, the building design you came up with looks, it's gonna look beautiful, I'm with Jerry, I think it's, it's gonna be nice to have that, kind of that bookend out there, you know, just letting people know that you're coming into a nice, a nice development here that's anchored with a first-class store, so, so, welcome, glad you're here. So, with that said, Lisa, it sounds like you're all fired up to...
Sure, well, I was just gonna try and propose a condition language on that condition, too, so, I would make a motion to approve Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number...
Five.
Resolution Number 5, Series 2017, recommending approval of the final plot and final development plan for Ethan Allen, Lot 12, Block 1, with the conditions as proposed by staff, and adding an additional condition that the applicant revise the parapet design as discussed during the planning commission meeting, will that work? Okay.
Fair enough, yeah.
Any easement for the, we wanna, oh, yeah.
And a second condition, to require the applicant to add an access or sidewalk easement along the west side of the property.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner McCool, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried.
Right.
Congratulations, thank you.
I'm excited about the opportunity to be here, and we appreciate all of your time.
You're welcome, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thanks for coming out.
And Kevin, there's Joe Ryan, and Brad, and Diego. Mr. Ram, I wanted to reach out to you and let you know if there were any items that Eric and I need to address with you, he's prepared right now, if you needed to talk with him, I called him right before the meeting, he's gonna say anything that needed to be addressed coming in.
I think the development agreement's still pending, so, I think, I think we sent you a development agreement, and that still needs to be finalized.
It does, and also the easements.
Was there any flexibility on that development agreement on any points, Eric had asked me to double-check with that, or is that...
Did you guys wanna chat out some?
Sure.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Stephen, staff announcements?
Um, yes, mostly related to the Northwest Superior area plan, or outreach, I guess I should call it at this point, I did get an update from Clarion on the 31st, and before October even ended, we had 362 online responses, so, that's great, I don't, I didn't get an update today, but I have been working with Darcy to try to figure out kinda the next steps, and her schedule related to our meetings don't really line up for November or December, so the options really are to have like a special meeting on November 28th and/or December 19th, in order for her to kinda come back and give you feedback, the December 1 is pretty close to the holidays, and November 1 is right after Thanksgiving, so, either of those dates is something I think we should probably run by the entire commission, but I did wanna just kinda throw that out to those who are here tonight, I can send an email tomorrow, but I think the, the thinking from staff is that we probably wanna have Darcy come back for two meetings, have one, have one of them be where she kinda presents all of the, you know, the results of the surveys, and, you know, some path forward for the recommendation for the board, but then to, you know, get feedback from you, and then maybe do a dry run on the presentation to see whether or not there was anything else or any other direction that Planning Commission wanted to provide, we could possibly do that all in one meeting, but if you guys wanted to break it up over two, the two now seems, just based on schedule conflicts, that it might trickle into January, but it's, it really depends on your guys' schedules, so I'll send out, I mean, you guys can respond now and tell me what you know your schedules are, but I can also just follow up via email if you want tomorrow.
What date do you want to...
The two dates?
November 28th and December 28th.
November 28th, which is, you know, Tuesday, they're all Tuesdays, but we could look at other meetings, none of, none of those meetings actually fall on our, our, our scheduled Planning Commission dates, so...
28th works for me, 19th is a little more tricky.
Yeah, 28th is, fine. Stay away from the 19th if we can, personally.
The 19th of December?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 28th works fine for me.
Okay, well, let's, let's plan on that one, and then maybe we can make a determination at that meeting whether or not we wanna have a follow-up before, and I don't really know what dates for the board are available yet in January either, so, we might be able to, I know that our first meeting is like, I think it's right after the holiday, so...
I don't have it on January, it's the 8th.
I can have it on my...
It's the 8th?
It's the 8th, okay, well, the 8th might work.
It's the board meeting.
That's the board meeting, yeah, so, our first meeting would be the 2nd, which might be tricky.
Yeah.
But we could maybe do one, the 9th is a special meeting, and then talk about getting something to the board on the 22nd, but I'll need to work with the town manager on the town board meeting that we're gonna get slated for.
I'd, I'd vote for not doing a meeting on January 2nd.
See, well, again, is it feasible to do both on the, you said, could we...
We might be able to get through it all, I don't know, I mean, Darcy's original suggestion was one meeting, and I just didn't know whether or not we'd get through, like, her presenting all of the data, and then also her kinda strategy for going forward to a board meeting.
Well, we have a meeting on the 5th, then, of December?
Yeah, what about our regular meetings, do we anticipate?
Right now, I, the only thing I was anticipating for that was this, I don't think that I'm gonna have a development plan, another development application ready.
And would Darcy be available on the 5th?
She's not.
She's not?
Oh, she's not available on the 5th?
No.
And the 21st is too soon, our standard meeting?
21st is right before, I, I could ask her about 21st, I'm not sure she commented on the 21st, she was the one that suggested the 28th.
That's the week of Thanksgiving, I mean, we're around...
Right.
If she's still here that day, if it works.
Yeah.
Let me see if I actually asked about that.
Yeah.
I think I was shooting for the 5th, so I'm not sure I got a comment on the 21st, I could ask them on the 21st, but I, the, the only issue with the 21st is, if we do need another meeting, it would either have to be the very following week on the 28th, or we have like a six-week lag between the two meetings, so, we're spreading them out a little further.
Well, they're probably short meetings, I don't think they'd be...
They hopefully...
I mean, the first, the first one might be the...
Do we have short meetings?
I don't know. We had, we had one together, we had one a couple Tuesdays ago.
So, the purpose of this meeting is for her to give us initial feedback?
Kind of the...
Initial analysis?
Yep, of the results that they received.
And then to do a presentation, a recommenda, recommended presentation of the board?
Kind of the path forward is...
Unless we can pull that off and...
She, I mean, she'd originally suggested one meeting, so she might be able to do it, she's pretty capable, she's done this a lot, but, but if you guys wanted to provide feedback at that meeting, and then see how the feedback was interpreted, you know, staff can also look at that, you know, just make sure that we're, before we go to the town board meeting.
Well, yeah, if we could try to do it sooner, and if we have feedback that we feel like needs to come back, then we'll deal with it then, if we don't, then we don't, and we're ahead of the game.
Sounds like the 28th is, is viable, though?
28th is viable, and I can inquire about the 21st with Clarion.
Yeah, that's our normal meeting, is, is the 21st, but...
Yeah, okay.
That sound good?
Sounds good.
Um, since we're on this, I mean, I already mentioned kind of offhand that there was one, there's two actually new, I guess, business licenses that went into the town center, one is for a cycle shop next to the niche, and then another was for my school, which I think has been kind of in operation for a little bit, and then we did have a, or we do have a tenant finish permit and a signed permit application, which I just got for the Arby's, for a sushi place, so...
For a what?
For what, I'm sorry?
Sushi, I believe?
Hmm, for sushi, sushi?
Sushi restaurant, yeah, so...
It's called Misaki at Superior.
Correct.
Misaki at Superior.
Oh, Misaki, yeah, they're, obviously, that's a chain, right, that's a, yeah.
I hadn't heard of it, yeah.
I think I can see their colors, yeah.
Okay, well, I just had one thing real quickly, Trustee Hemmerly sent me a nice note wanting me to thank everybody on the commission for your hard work and I think staff's hard work in connection with the Northwest Superior Outreach Plan. She said she attended, I think, at least two, if not all of the outreach sessions and thought that the consultant did a great job and thought that the feedback received was actionable and thoughtful, and just wanted me to pass along her gratitude to all of you for your good work, so, there you have it.
And I'd love to echo Clarion, I mean, I was, I wasn't sure what to expect and I was very, very impressed with just her knowledge of, of our history and catchy, getting caught up on, on all the changes that, that have happened over the last decade and having those just right on the tip of her tongue as questions and comments came up and she, I think she handled the, the meetings extremely well, I was already blown away, so, great.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I thought she did a great job. What it brought up for me is the need for us to be more proactive in terms of, once again, helping our businesses in the marketplace with being more connected and having more visibility. The meeting that she ran with the business owners and the manager for the marketplace